Okay, it is eight thirty. I will go ahead and call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. First item on the agenda is an approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second, motion from Commissioner Gross to approve the agenda, second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The next item on the agenda is the citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? Steve, I understand you've had a request.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I did receive a request last Friday for a citizen to speak on an issue not on the agenda. We talked about clarifying the timeframe this morning at eight thirty to present, and it doesn't appear that they're here this morning.
Okay, all right, we can acknowledge that, and then if you have any more correspondence, we can certainly hear that at a later date. The... My agenda is last week from my packet. Sorry. I'll grab my computer in a second. The next item on the agenda is a payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The next item is the meeting minutes from the August thirtieth work group.
I move approval.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The next item on the agenda this morning is an update from the Clay County Historical and Cultural Society. Maureen is with us this morning. Good morning. Just make sure that your microphone is green. Just, there you are.
There we go. Thank you so much for your continued support of our efforts and for this opportunity to share a bit about our programming. I am happy to report that 2022 has been a healthy bouncing back year for us in terms of visitors to the museum. We're in line to meet our admission gift shop and membership goals. We've also had a successful year in writing and receiving a number of grants over the year, and our many donors have been generous. Our biggest project has been to renovate the Ship Gallery exhibit for the fortieth anniversary of the Voyage of the Yom Komst and to upgrade the Hopperstad Stav Church exhibit. We raised funds and installed a hundred thousand dollar exhibit that will educate and entertain thousands of visitors for the next ten years or longer. So if you haven't seen it, come on over and take a look at the brand new exhibit. We had a big opening on July twenty-third, and about four hundred and fifty people came, so that was great fun. We've continued to serve our Clay County constituents in a number of ways. Our Idaho Manipi Clay County at One Fifty exhibit remains up through 2023. We planned it for a three-year span to cover eighteen seventy-one to eighteen seventy-three, when the county was officially and formally formed. And we've had many school groups this last May to learn about their local history. We were involved with Holly's Hundred-and-Fiftieth Anniversary Celebration, and archivist Mark Peel and historian Marcus Krieger have continued to make numerous off-site presentations on Clay County history throughout the year. We continue to preserve a collection of over twelve thousand historical artifacts and to take in some new donations each year. And we're working on improving our collections' conditions by upgrading our storage equipment as grants are awarded. County funds are used to support collection staff salaries. Archivist Mark Peel, whose work is widely known and appreciated in the community and who is often quoted in the papers when a historical perspective is needed on any issue, collections manager Lisa Vida, who has care of twelve thousand objects and who's celebrated her twentieth year with the Historical Society this year, and then collections assistant Kevin Wander. We completed a conservation survey of all of our paintings and half of our textiles, and we will use the assessments to carry out long-term conservation treatments. There are a number of pioneer textiles, outfits, clothing that are in need of conservation treatment. And so the long-term goal is to make more of our collection accessible to the public through online means. Many photographs and artifact records are now available to the public on a website called Minnesota Collections. Staff are currently developing the next Clay County-centered exhibition, which is going to be about food production, tentatively called Land to Table, and that will open in 2024. So we're in pretty much constant research and writing mode for the Clay County exhibits. As one is put up and enjoyed, then the next one is under the cycle of research and writing going on. So as we are on a calendar year for our fiscal year, we don't actually approve our budget until December, but I will forward that as soon as it's approved by our Board of Directors. As most organizations are these days, we are facing some real competition, in particular with salaries, with offering salaries. We have very relatively low salaries for our historians, and so we are seeking support for hoping to keep our work going for years to come. And does anyone have any questions?
Thank you so much for the update. Does this board have any questions in regards to the report? You do have a Commissioner that serves on your board. Commissioner Kaylee?
I don't have any questions, but you did a really good job of covering a lot of the highlights. An incredible amount of work has been done in the last few years, really celebrating the people who have lived here forever, who have come here as immigrants, and the contributions that they have brought to our community. And I know the board is really looking at folks that continue to come into our community as well and how that's being represented in that space. So thank you for your work, and thank you for all of the efforts of the staff to preserve these things and tell these stories. That's a real treasure in our area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen, as you have people come forward with potential artifacts and as you continue to catalog what you do have and maybe shift things around, are there people in the community that can come to you that say, "Look, if you get something like this and it maybe doesn't fit for the Historical Society," is that something that you can help coordinate a transfer of those items to people that may be interested?
Absolutely. People come to us nearly every week with historical objects that, of course, have great personal value or historical value. They may not be Clay County-centered, and we have to, because of the limitations of our space and our mission, we have to focus only on Clay County. So we will help them find a more appropriate Historical Society, for example, that goes to Norman County or that goes to... The other thing is even across the river, you know, with this Cass County in North Dakota, a lot of Fargoans think that we're the only one, and they are also a collecting institution. So we always try to find the most appropriate home for objects.
And the other piece is, I know during the pandemic it was difficult. Thank you so much for the flexibility that you and your staff showed to continue to keep the doors open, so to speak, on the Historical Society. And certainly, one of the biggest missions, I think, is the ability for Clay County students to get in there and really walk through and experience and witness all that is there to offer. And so it's great that we're still continuing that mission and that folks are able to, especially students, get in there and really see what you have to offer. So thank you.
I think the Clay County Archives are probably the most surprising thing to students. They can understand tangible objects, but it's the documents and the letters and diaries and the kinds of things that provide the intimate detail of people's lives from the past that really fascinate them the most. And I know we get a few new historians out of every school visit in that way, so.
Very cool. Any other questions or comments? I do see that there is a request in regards to the budget. Certainly, this board values the partnership, the continued partnership with the organization. We are making final decisions on our preliminary budget towards, I think, this last week of this month. So Steve will be in contact in regards to that request. Sorry. Anything else? Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
The next item, item number three, is a request to fill a vacancy for the Assistant County Attorney position. We have Assistant County Attorney Mike Leeser with us this morning.
And a proud member of the Clay County Historical Society.
Yes, very good.
Appreciate Maureen's remarks. Madam Chair, thank you. Mr. Melton is in a jury trial this morning. He would obviously prefer to be here and address you all for this request, but he is detained elsewhere and sending me up here in his place. So we appreciate you making a time for us. As the board's aware from the agenda item information sheet, we have a vacancy coming up in our office for an Assistant County Attorney. This position is already budgeted. We have someone in the office who's moving on at the end of October, and we're coming to the board for permission to fill that vacancy. And I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Leeser?
Is this something that would potentially require a backfill?
No, this is, this would be somebody that we would hire to fill the open spot. So there's nobody in the office, I don't think, that would... This isn't a tiered position that someone could step into.
Thank you.
Move approval.
A motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Granted.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. Leeser. The next item on the agenda this morning is a request for the extension of the Make Morehead Home two-year property tax rebate program and the scheduling of a public hearing for October eleventh. We have Morehead's Government Affairs Director Lisa Bodie with us this morning.
Good morning and thank you. As noted, we are requesting the extension of the two-year property tax abatement or rebate. And the program has been in place for a number of years. We put together a briefing sheet that kind of shows you the history of the program and, you know, the value of the homes that have been constructed under the program. And the city council and the school board had presentations on this issue last night, and both approved the program, the continuation of the program unanimously. We have a letter of support from the Home Builders Association, who obviously have a vested interest, but they are great partners with us in building our community and building our tax base. And I could give you a lot more detail, but maybe if you are familiar with the program, just ask me any additional questions that you might have.
Okay. Any questions in regards to this piece?
I think the program's been going on quite some time, and I think it must be working, so I'll make a motion to approve. There's no further questions.
Again, the motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gross to approve the request, a second from Commissioner Campbell. Noted in the packet is also included is a letter of support from the Morehead Home Builders Association in regards to this.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell.
So we also implement this for other cities, don't we, Steve? Is this something, is that due? Maybe I can go back and look at Lori back there. Are we due for that to be renewed as well? Is that what this is doing, all of them, or... Because this one refers to just Make More at Home.
Lori, can you grab a microphone?
You know, so I guess I'm curious if we have to have another one that takes care of Barnesville and everybody else.
They all do their own separate approval, and so this just approves the overall program, and then each city and school district, if they decide if they want to participate.
But if I can just clarify, because this request is an extension of Make Morehead Home, and I don't, the way it is on the agenda, I don't know if that's Clay County's title name. Maybe, Steve, you can maybe answer that.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Madam Chair, the second portion of that is having the public hearing on October eleventh, and that's when this board would take formal action on taking our portion. And if the board were to support that, then we have about thirty different agencies or government agencies at school districts that will send that out to at that point.
Okay.
So what, and our entities will be invited to that public hearing.
So as clarification, the first motion and second on the table would be to approve the request of the extension after we vote. I would appreciate the second piece would be the public hearing. Any further discussion on this? Certainly, I agree. This is something that I think is an asset to all of Clay County. It certainly, through the dialogue with Morehead leaders and residents, but also with our small cities, has been something that is an asset in recruiting people to your towns and Clay County as a whole. So I think it's certainly something that has paid itself over.
We really appreciate the partnership.
Any further discussion on this? There is a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chair, I move.
Carried. That's okay.
I move we schedule the public hearing for October eleventh.
There is a motion to schedule the public hearing for the property tax rebates for October eleventh.
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Karen, did you want to comment on this piece? Were you just here?
I just wanted to show support.
Okay.
But I will comment at the public.
At the public hearing. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lauer. The next item is, we did have a request to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, and that individual is here now. So, Mr. Shores, if you would like, we have a microphone that we can make sure is on. You have the opportunity to address the board on your concerns. Mr. Larson had let us know that you had some concerns, but we would allow you three minutes to address the board if you'd like.
Is it okay if I just stay here and project?
It is, but I would ask maybe if we get a microphone for you so that we can...
Do I have to ask permission to come aboard?
No, they're bringing it to you, Mr. Shores. There. It's fairly loud, so don't worry about...
Testing, testing.
There you are.
If I may, good morning. If I may digress. Buju anin, nese indajinikas, anishanabwem. Kevin Richard Shores, indajinikas, jaganashimug. Makwa nindunde minawad, nindogichida. Ki minawag, gawababi ganikag, indunjibab, Morehead, Minnesota, nungu mendey. Chimigwich, kichimandudu, gane kana. Hello and hi. My birth given name is Kevin Richard Shores, although I prefer to be called Nese in homage to my anishanabe ancestry. I am a hundred percent service-connected disabled veteran. I have been diagnosed with rheumatoid variant disease from my investigation. It's Gulf War illness. I'm active with veterans' rights and Native American, Paleo-Americans' rights. I moved up to Morehead in nineteen ninety-nine. I fell in love with Morehead enough that I rolled for mayor three occasions, and I'm doing it currently now. I believe that if a society is based upon how they take care of their downtrodden, then this county is failing, especially me being almost at the bottom of the barrel. I purchased my home on nine zero two Sixteenth Street in South Morehead. I purchased that home in two thousand and five, paid it outright roughly five years ago because of some challenges. Unbeknownst to me, and I have not been able to find out why, my house was never put in homestead status. And it's the only home I have, and I haven't been able to figure out why this occurred. But this means over the last eighteen years in this house, I've been charged with inflated property tax. Not only that, the Minnesota State has a waiver for disabled veterans for property tax, which I had tried submitting frequently over the years without having success. And as some may notice or not, I am blind. I can't see at all, and I need to use adaptive equipment in order to assist me to correspond because a blind man cannot read a letter. I like to think that's very simple logic. So I have continuously, with the county, requested to follow the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and find a way that we can utilize so we can correspond properly and in a timely manner. And the county continued to refuse this request. They have proven to me, just on Friday, Mr. Steve Larson sent me an email. So they've proven to me that they have my email because I gave that to them several times over the years. And now we are dealing with this property tax. They're saying I'm del... I'm sorry?
I think someone was just coughing. That's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can continue, Mr. Nese.
So they were saying that I was delinquent with property tax here, where I'm thinking that I'm getting this waiver. So then I'm informed about the delinquency, and I'm trying to work with the county so I can rectify the situation. And I even got the Clay County Veteran Service Officer involved because he was willing to come to my home and help me fill out paperwork because I'm not getting adequate services from the VA with my daily living activities. And as I thought, understanding that the county knew that Kurt was trying to rectify the situation, yet they continued on with the delinquency. And I found out a month ago that the state of Minnesota stole my house, and Clay County was involved with this theft because it's an absolute violation of my rights as a disabled veteran. As a Paleo-American, you're taking my home from me. As a veteran, you're taking my home from me and justifying it because of property taxes. And when I brought this up to Lori in the office about ADA rights, she informed me that Minnesota property taxes supersedes the ADA rights. And I am appalled to find out that I have to come before you and request the repurchase of my home. That's unacceptable. It should be the county saying, "We are sorry for violating your rights. Here is your home. How do we work together so that you can have some sensitivity to people that are blind or people that are disabled?" Because if you even go to your website, it is an arduous task, as you could imagine, for somebody who's blind, even with adaptive programming. So I thank you for your time and the precious moments that you have, but I'm demanding that this situation get rectified immediately because it has caused me so many challenges. I got awarded a grant to get flooring done and remodeling done in my home, and I emptied out my house for this to happen before winter. And now it can't happen. And so now I have to schedule people again to get the stuff back into my home. And so this has caused me major turmoil, stress, and again, it's appalling. Again, thank you for your precious moments. Make which. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nese. I appreciate you coming to this board. One, thank you for requesting for Mr. Larson to address the board. But two, thank you so much for your service. We are completely, excuse me, indebted to folks like you who have selflessly served their nation. It is my hope that we can clarify some pieces to this. I know that unfortunately, Mr. Cannon, who is our Veteran Service Officer, is not able to be here. He is out of town. But, Mr. Larson, would you like to respond?
I believe that, I know that Kurt has worked closely with Nese over not just the last few months, but over the last few years in order to coordinate a number of things. I believe my understanding is that the state of Minnesota has come forward and will be providing funding. We've not received, we've received a verbal notification that that payment will be made on behalf of the state for Nese's home. And so we're currently awaiting that through the auditor's office. I know Ms. Johnson has completed the paperwork that they've requested, and so we will be bringing that forward at a later time.
So in terms of that first piece, this board has no ability to speed up the processing of the funds?
No, not at this time. We're waiting on the state of Minnesota.
Okay, so in regards to the home component, is there anything that this board has the authority to do?
Mr., or Nese is, I believe, is in his home yet, and so at this point, we would just, we would be waiting for that process. I think that Mr. Cannon has worked closely with Nese, and so I would just encourage Nese to ensure that the homestead credit documentation is completed. If that has not been done, that was one of the holdups. And also, that would then make him eligible for the Veterans Tax exemption. That wouldn't, he wouldn't be in this position again.
Okay, so then in terms, I think there's a couple components that I want to make sure and answer. In terms, Nese, of the homestead credit piece, I want to make sure that staff is working with you to make sure that that is completed wholly, which I'm hearing that Mr. Cannon has, is aware of that and will make sure that that's completed correctly so that going forward, that component is correct.
That is, that homestead document is the most important thing to make sure that Nese is eligible for all the other different programming.
The veterans' piece. Okay.
The eligibility, sorry.
No, you're fine. Let's just make sure that, can he have the microphone as well?
I just wanted to point it out that it's a shame that a piece of paper, and I understand because beans are being counted, because I'm finding out it doesn't matter who pays the property tax as long as it gets paid, which never would have been paid in the first place because I meet the waiver. I'm a hundred percent service-connected. But because of your desire and need of the paperwork, the paper trail, to just monitor the money, but it's still frustrating because last time I had a conversation with Mr. Larson, it was not a good exchange that ended up with him hanging up on me. So my faith in Clay County, you know, getting this rectified is not strong at all.
Mr. Nese, one, I apologize for that. Unfortunately, sometimes you're not the only person that this has happened to in regards to sometimes, for whatever reason, a homestead paperwork or if there's a caretaker that is overseeing, something just gets missed. For instance, I missed out on a homestead component because I forgot to file mine when I moved to my home as well because I just assumed it was. And unfortunately, we don't have the power to go back for a significant amount of years to rectify that. It's my hope that now going forward, we will be able to put in place a process that will help you. And I do apologize if there's frustration on your part. I do know that our staff has really tried to be as clear in explaining what their authority and what their ability in the process is. If that felt like that wasn't the answer you wanted, I'm apologizing to you. But I'm hopeful that your faith in the mission of the county as a whole will be restored through time. I do want to address your... I do want to address your other concern, which was the American Disabilities Act and accessibility of government services to folks with disabilities. And you're right, and it takes someone from the outside sometimes to identify how a system may be broken for other people, and we appreciate and respect your insight. I had a conversation, after your conversation with our administrator on Friday, to identify any area that you have identified, and make sure we put staff on it to make sure we can implement better accessibility. So you're 100% correct. We've had this conversation in regards to making sure our new American populations are seeing where they can access Clay County services in their home language, and how we can do that through internet services. But you're right, sometimes things get missed. And it's our hope that we can implement shortly a process that allows people to access, access the services.
Thank you.
Any further questions? So going forward, are you clear with what will be coming in regards to the process?
I understand the process, but working with the state, and right now, I'm just feeling like I'm getting the runaround from different agencies. And so it's just frustrating, because people are telling me that it's going to be taken care of, but I'm, you know, I'm trying to get some kind of tangible, whether it be documented on the computer or whatever, you know, that it is going to happen.
Okay, well, I'm hopeful that, like I said, we are able to get through this. I will say that our Veteran Service Office is a champion to so many people, and I'm hopeful that you will allow them to help you through this process, and both Jennifer and Kurt hopefully can get this finished for you.
May I ask of the Commissioner, or if somebody could give me a letter, or draft up a letter, understanding the challenge that has occurred, and that the process of returning my home to me is forthright?
So as noted, because this is a public hearing, or a public meeting, this is, this meeting is documented and recorded, and there will be minutes that this board approves within two weeks that will show that you came to this board to voice your questions and concerns in the process. So is that, is that an official document enough? And then after you answer, Commissioner Campbell has a comment.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank, okay. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, thank you for being here today and sharing your concerns, and I think our Board Chair has expressed the feeling of all of us here. I think it's, the issues are important, and they need to be addressed. And I would request that we as a board be updated as this information progresses on this piece of property especially, so that it remains in his, at his, as his home. So if we can do that, whenever those things occur, and as long as there's no pressure being put on him right now to, for example, find an alternative place to live, that would just not be acceptable. So with that in mind, if we could just get updates as we move forward on the process.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Kaylee?
Hello, Mr. Naysay, we've spoken on the phone before, and I just wanted, since you can't see me smiling at you, I just wanted to greet you and let you know that, yes, as your Commissioner, I have been paying attention to this. And I would agree with Commissioner Campbell that our Chair has voiced our concerns quite well, and look forward to seeing this handled swiftly for you.
Anything else?
I may just add one thing about Kurt.
Yes, Mr. Naysay, and then we, I have allowed you more time than typical, so that's okay, if you'd like to speak into the microphone.
I just wanted to say about Kurt, about Kurt, the Veteran Service Officer.
Yes.
He has done his due diligence in assisting with me, and he should be getting the recognition that he has for helping veterans out, because he has helped me over the years. So thank you, Kurt.
Thank you very much for your comments.
And thank you for your time.
Yes, you're welcome, sir. Anything further? Thank you. We will continue with our meeting, and you will have some correspondence from staff as soon as we know anything, but thank you for your time. The next item on our agenda this morning is item five, which would be an update on ARPA funds from our Administrator, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you recall, last week, we made a number of ARPA, had ARPA considerations that we addressed, and at that point, indicated that we would come back and provide a new update based on the changes that were made. We funded a number of, a number of items that we had earlier suggested the possibility of funding two years because of hiring, hiring challenges. We are basically looking to fund that through, through 2023, through the allocations. It also makes it easier from a budget planning standpoint for our different departments. And so with those adjustments, you can see that we have, we've spent $12,267,222 of the original, $12,474,372, leaving $207,150 remaining. There is one item that we've had some discussion with at, for ARPA funding through CAP LP that we'll probably be bringing here forward, but as far as that goes, we don't have any other pending items out there. Please note that in the, on the column, on the top left-hand column, we do have, we do have a funding reserved in the event that we have additional challenges of future COVID outbreaks. We have funding set aside to help deal with that. That I'd yield for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. I think, Mr. Larson, I think one of the, one of the things that we need to recognize, that $1 million that we show in reserve, that is really reserved for, right now, for public health needs.
That's correct.
You know, I think just seeing the word there, "reserve," can mean multiple things, but at this, at this point where we're at in this process, our ARPA committee strongly believes that that reserve should be dedicated right now towards public health issues.
Okay. Comments? If not, this was just an update for the board? Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Yep.
Committee reports. Mr. Commissioner Ebbinger, would you like to start today?
Sure, thank you.
And it is two weeks versus of reports, because we had a work session last week. Right? No, no, one week.
Oh.
We did have, sorry.
Okay. I was gonna have to wing it there for a minute.
Yeah, right.
On the eighth, I attended the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon meeting with Commissioner Gross. They described the Gulf Service funding that's available for Gulf War veterans. They run $600 for those who wear not boots on ground, $1,200 for those that were deployed into the war zone, and Gold Star families are $2,000 worth of bonus funds available. You can contact our VSO or the Veterans Administration about applying for that. They didn't give any specific details on the process, but documentation is available for the veterans that are there. That was the only thing of note I had, I put down in that meeting. And then, of course, yesterday, on the 12th, we had an interview of one of the contractors submitting for the substance use crisis facility, it's under consideration, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebbinger. While we're on Commissioner Ebbinger's reports, I, it might make sense, Mr. Larson, to adjust the one meeting that we did have a request to add, and because of Commissioner Ebbinger's portfolio, I felt it would be important to add it to that. Would you like to update quick on that, so the board could officially do that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did receive a request this week from CAP LP to have a county representative on their Clay County Council on Aging. That meets four times per year. We have had a Commissioner there in the past, and they're requesting that, if the board would so see, that I'd like to have that continue.
Thank you. So Commissioner Kaylee and I do serve on the CAP LP full board, but this is specifically the Council on Aging, as I recall Commissioner Wayland served on that, so it would fit within that portfolio of assignments.
I would move that we appoint our young man, Mr. Ebbinger, to that Age Council on the Aging, whatever it is.
Second. Commissioner Campbell makes a motion to appoint
CAP LP.
To the CAP LP Area Aging Board, second from Commissioner Kaylee. That would be attend those meetings with per diem. Now that you're in a new age bracket, maybe it makes sense, happy belated birthday. Anything else on that piece? All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie?
I will abstain on this vote.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Campbell, would you like?
Thank you. I only had one meeting last week, and that was the transfer station construction meeting that continues to be going smoothly now, with the exception of the ongoing issue regarding the availability of product. And I'm referring mostly to concrete, and how that is disrupting some things. They are planning, I believe it's this week, to have the fabricated scale house delivered and put in place, and I asked them if they measured twice and cut once, so hopefully that is what happens, and it fits. And then there continues to be a lot of work. I think now they're getting close to pouring the floor in Area C, which is the tipping floor area. And then shortly after that, we will probably start to see the steel frame on the remainder of that third piece start to go up. So you'll start to see some, some more activity there, and they continue to work on drywall inside, the windows are in, and most of it, so it's progressing along nicely. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Gross?
Last Wednesday, we had a, had a meeting with the Partnership for Health, we had an audit report, and that, which came out, I think, everybody got an email on that also. Audit report came out very well, they all unmodified, which is a very good report, so everything was very, came out very good with that, so I think we'll be getting further information on that. But Thursday, I had, as Commissioner Ebbinger stated, the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. Just a couple other things, the Fargo VA's, they're looking for volunteer drivers out there, if your people want, if there's anybody who wants to volunteer out of the VA, I'm sure if you just go out there, they'd be glad to use your, use your services. And then Fargo VA is also doing some hiring, so if you need a job, go to the Fargo VA and make applications there. There was also suicide prevention at Richland County that they held, there was 157 people that attended that. I don't know if that's good or bad, I mean, I think it's good that they attended it, but in a way, I hate to see that many people that are going to a suicide prevention thing, but it's, had a good turnout for that. I'm sure if you listen to the news, you've noticed that there's been another flight to Washington DC that is going on right now, there's another one in October, that's from Grand Forks area, it's going to go there, October 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, so another flight going out there. They're mostly concentrated on the Vietnam vets right now, so, not that other vets aren't qualified for it, but they're concentrating on that right now. And Monday, yesterday morning, we had a short meeting on the detox center. There's getting to be some more requirements that we weren't aware of, or what they call B3 requirements, some different heating things we may have to do, may have to go geothermal or solar or something like that, we're not quite sure what they're going to do, they're checking that out, what type of, what type of heating we need for that now, so maybe some extra costs involved in that detox center that we weren't aware of, so.
Just maybe a follow-up, and I can report on that too, but that will require a little bit of a change to the contract that we have with Klein-McCarthy. Certainly, there are cost benefits to different decisions, but we will ask this board to entertain that contract addendum next week. Yes, Commissioner?
Can I ask a quick question on that? Do we anticipate there being any additional, maybe state grant dollars for energy-efficient projects that could go towards that?
Right, it appears, sorry to poach your reports here, but because there is some changes in leadership in those offices, we're having a hard time getting a solid answer on what the requirement is, and I think the easy answer is to just say there might be the ability to seek additional grant funds. I think we should be seeking additional grant funds based on the exorbitant cost of the project now versus what it was initially awarded, but yes, there, there are some ways that we could potentially tap into some additional funds.
I've done my report now.
Sorry. Thanks, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Kaylee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the sixth, our Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council leadership met to plan our upcoming meeting. Representative Heather Keeler will be attending that, that's the third Tuesday of the month at 3:00 PM in Room 4 at the Family Service Center. It's open to the public. In particular, we're looking to talk about gaps in service and barriers that consumers are seeing and providers are seeing, and what are some tangible things that we could be working on with our legislature this year, this upcoming year, to address some of those. Related to that, also, on the eighth, I had our Health and Human Services Policy Committee with AMC, and we very easily could take up the whole AMC platform just with Health and Human Services pieces that were left on the table, and new things that have been added as well. So there's a lot of overlap between those conversations with our mental health providers and that conversation that we had at, that pre-meeting with Health and Human Services with AMC. I look forward to digging in, and I've also been talking with Kathy McKay, our Public Health Director, and Rhonda Porter with Social Services, to identify the Clay County-specific priorities, the stories behind those, and I'll be looking forward to pushing that agenda in a couple days at our AMC meeting. On the seventh, I attended our Early Childhood Initiative meeting to work out some of the final details for the mental health training that we are putting on in October, that'll be October 7th at 6:00 PM. And the training is how to talk to new Americans and refugees about mental health and what we can do to reduce stigma. This is targeted at professionals, business leaders, childcare providers, and educators, anyone that's working with these families in the area, to better understand some of the cultural and religious components to these families in the mental health spectrum. Registration for that training is free, light supper will be provided. You can find out more information on Eventbrite and on Facebook, it's being shared broadly there. There's also been flyers distributed through a lot of professional email chains around the area. On the ninth, I attended- On the 9th, I attended the CAP LP meeting about their whole family approach that they're rolling out. This is something that they've been working towards for many years, but is really launching now. They talked a little bit about the history of community action, and how the whole family has kind of been a part of that vision from its conception. But now it's being really formalized in a way to meet a family, not just with crisis support to get them through the next few months, but what can we do to get them to their vision for their dreams for the next 10 years. This whole family approach is coming alongside families that have at least one kid in the house under the age of five. They have to be under 200% of that poverty number, poverty range, income range. And the idea is to reduce or eliminate the transmission of poverty to future generations. One of the beautiful things about this particular program that they're rolling out, it is very intensive, and there is no time limit on it. And so a lot of our programs, you might meet with a coach for a period of months. This could go on for years. Whatever it takes to get to the family, to their goals and their dreams, they'll be working intensively with a coach, goal-setting, to meet, yeah, their goals and their values. And some of the moms that are enrolled in the program already have said, nobody's asked me what my dreams are. And so instead of just getting food on the table for this week, making sure we have housing, really looking at where do we actually want to go? What do I want for my child's future? So that's really exciting. They're currently serving 24 families, and they'll be adding more soon. Then yesterday, as has been mentioned by others, I also attended the Substance Abuse Crisis Center CM interview. And following that, I met with Social Services and our contract worker Karen Pfeifer, who's working on childcare, and connecting up all of these kind of pieces. So she's working as a coordinator to connect up, how can we get projects started, new childcare centers opened, how can we ensure that people aren't closing their doors unnecessarily to address the childcare crisis in our area. One of the things Karen shared at that conversation was that we are short over 1,000 childcare spots currently in our community. And there is no way that we could open enough in-home childcare centers, even if we opened a new one every month for the next 10 years, to address that. So we have to look at the issue holistically, with centers, with in-home, with friends and family care, and what can we be doing to drive forward, maybe special child cares as well, to get this handled. So we can get folks working that want to be working, that kids can be in quality childcare environments, so that they are learning and growing. That concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Last week, I also attended the work group that the entire board had taken part in, and then that afternoon, attended the transfer station construction meeting out at the job site. Things are really progressing there, and hopeful we can continue to chug on through for that piece. We did, we did talk a little bit about the ground cover in regards to the plantings. There will be a portion that the city of Morehead will be planting into a pollinator habitat, which certainly will tie into the general vision for that property, which is reducing the waste stream and bettering the environment. So we're excited about that component. And I also attended the breakfast and learn with the community action on the whole family approach. Yesterday morning, I also attended with Commissioner Gross the Substance Use Crisis Facility discussion in regards to the B3. Certainly, this board supported the solar initiatives in regards to buying a full solar array to offset the energy consumption that we had with our new law enforcement center and correctional facility. That is a component that we could potentially use in this as well. And then attended the full board interviews for the construction contractor interviews for the Substance Use Crisis Facility in the afternoon, or morning. And then I did try to attend the MetroCog meeting, but we were having technical difficulties. I did, unfortunately, I was not able to attend the SWCD tour. I heard great feedback from not only environmental employees and workers, but also potential candidates for state office attended that. So that's always a good thing to make sure they're aware of what's going on. But I did stop in to discuss, there was an, the auditor issued a comment on the riparian funds that the county has been allocated. We have earmarked some of those funds for potential litigation, if there needed to be mitigation in that area, and wanting to make sure that we're utilizing those funds to the best of our ability. I've directed Steve to, and I talked to the SWCD in regards to using those funds if necessary for some of those buffer strip replantings if needed, but making sure that we're utilizing those funds. So I did talk with staff out there on that piece. And I believe that concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This past week, I participated in the owners' meeting. It's been covered by Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Mojo. It's fun to occasionally get out there and see the tour as everything's coming together. Big changes happening daily. On the 6th, I had a phone conversation with Scott Fettig in regards to the B3 energy efficiency discussion that's been talked about. On the 7th, we had a Strive for Excellence Committee. Again, we kind of brought that committee back to look at recruitment retention, looking at, from a value standpoint, are there things that we can do from an employee enrichment and training leadership advancement discussion? We also had some discussions about topics for a 2023 management governmental retreat. Seventh, also met with Darren and had some ongoing discussions on union negotiations. On the 8th, I had a lot of time on the agenda prep and some additional conversation on the B3 with Klein-McCarthy. On 9th, had a conversation with Dan Molly in regards to the Red River Regional Dispatch facility and the JPA contract. On the 9th, also, just a couple of different items here. On the 9th, I had two discussions with Kerry Tooten and James O'Donnell. Just for the board's awareness, you know, this August, we started with a new medical team, ACH, is providing nursing services. They have been challenged to find, to complete both nursing positions. Right now, the one nurse has been working extended hours. Kerry had indicated that they believe that there'll be someone coming on board. But both the juvenile center and the correctional facility have been short as far as coverage. The juvenile center staff have been helping with some of the medication dispensing, and both agencies have been working with ACH in having the monthly cost reflected with the lack of service. The correctional facility has also been having some challenges. A number of years ago, the board approved Trinity Foods Services to help with the food service preparation. They've had a challenge, as many of us have, with finding employees. The contract that they currently have, has their employees making about $15 an hour. And so they haven't, they currently don't have any staff working there. And so our Trinity has been purchasing, purchasing food being brought into the correctional facility detox and the juvenile center. So they are getting meals. The challenging, the challenging part for the juvenile facility is these meals don't qualify for the National School Lunch Program, and so they'll be, they won't be able to submit for this timeframe. So I know that Kerry's been working with the administration from Trinity Foods and trying to get a plan forward. They're bringing some staff in from other states, actually, currently, right now. But I just wanted to make the board aware, in the event that you heard anything that those two items are happening at our correctional facility and juvenile center. On the 19th, actually, all last week, where the board approved the audit process with the state, and so the state has started that process. Worked, want to thank Shannon and Kathy from the Resource Recovery Center, as they worked through the solid waste department. There's some additional documentation that needed to be found, and so I thank them for helping me get that to the auditor. Yesterday, participated in the B3 meeting that's been addressed. And again, as Commissioner Mojo has said, we'll have some additional information next year, what that cost is going to be. Essentially, it would be dictated by that additional study that Klein-McCarthy would be before you next week. Participated in the interview process last, yesterday, that will continue today. And also, just a note, one of the things that we talked about, I think, last week, the annual AMC conference in Bloomington this year, part of that is in, we have eight voting members as we vote for the platforms. We've had some changeover in our department heads over the last year. And so what I would be looking for is direction from the board at some point. The AMC would be asking who those voting members would be from a reservation standpoint and signing up for the conference. Would like to be able to do that now. And so we have the ability to, as five commissioners, we have three additional delegates that we could designate. Matt Jacobson is the remaining vote, voting member.
So Steve and I have had conversation about this in the last week, and certainly feel like all of our department heads offer immense perspective, and so I appreciate that. I believe in the past, we've had our solid waste director, our planning and zoning director, our county engineer as part of that. Those are valuable positions. I would also maybe throw into the hat that I think it would be vitally important going forward, based on what our county trends are, and Commissioner Kaylee had reported. Certainly, having our social service director, I think, would be of value as well. But certainly, the board needs to offer some feedback in regards to that. Miss, Commissioner Ebinger?
Yeah, I have no problem with those, with Matt and Rhonda, but I think we need to include our county administrator in this. I think he would be, he's currently not voting?
That's correct.
Okay. I think he would be important.
Yeah. So, you know, I think you're right. I agree. I think Steve should be a voting member, and we should, I know in the past, we've had our SWAC director, because we've had some serious issues at the state level that we've been advocating for funding and priorities. Sometimes there's not enough votes, unfortunately. Any other commissioners have perspective? Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I guess, from my standpoint, I think either social services or highway would be important. I do agree that Steve should be there and Matt should be there. Again, these are, these are on voting issues, and typically, you know, it's typically their formality votes in most instances. However, there can be some instances where somebody can bring something up to the floor in that process. And my past experience on that is it's always, it's always been dealing with transportation issues and changes to transportation policy. And, you know, from that standpoint, you know, I also see our highway engineer would be really beneficial to be. Of course, we could still have him be there, but, you know, maybe not a voting member, but.
I think it also probably depends on who can attend that as well. And so if, for instance, because it's not been something that we've had our social service director attend that, if they're not going to, maybe we're coordinating with department heads that, could you please champion this, this, and this? Yes, Commissioner Kaylee?
Again, yeah, back to, as I reported earlier, there are so many issues with public health and with social services, that I think we need at least one of those two to be there. So maybe if one can't attend, you know, if social services can't attend, maybe public health can, or vice versa. But I'd like both personally, just knowing what they're up against, but.
Yes?
Madam Chair, one of the other options is, is kind of the thought process of not having, I mean, when I came on board, the county administrator wasn't a voting member. One of the other options, and part of that was, is I'm part of the MACA Association, and so I also have the opportunity to get our two cents in through the County Administrator's Association, which is part of AMC. And so, you know, if the board felt strongly about having the highway engineer and social service director, public health, I certainly would, that would be an option that I could continue to voice my, the county's perspective through that organization also.
And I, you know, going to that, I think the same can be said for Rhonda. I mean, because she, SWAC, I mean, all those, they're on. Dave is a member of the highway engineers, you know, they're there too.
Justin.
Or Justin, I'm sorry. Justin is a member of the engineers. Rhonda's a member in social services, and I'm sure.
Corey?
Hmm?
Corey would be SWAC, and.
Yeah.
Well.
And I mean, I know, and with the highway engineers, they generally have, also have somewhat of a conference also during that time. So there's a significant number of the highway engineers that are at that conference.
Well, I think maybe you've heard feedback on a number. Maybe if you could have feedback or conversations with those department heads to see who is even planning on attending, and then maybe that would change our list going forward. But I think you've heard a pretty strong consensus throughout the county, or the county board, as to, you know, where.
I will reach out to those department heads and get their interest. And then, from the standpoint that, at some point, we'll need, we'll have to take formal board action for AMC. So I'll bring that back at a later time.
And that usually involves being there at the very last moment of the conference as well, so.
Just two additional items, quick. I did, Yoke Sim did invite each of you to a cultural potluck event, a welcome event on the 24th of September, so that's in your information. If we do have, if there's interest in that, more than two commissioners, please let me know, and we'll have that posted. Also, we're getting closer to having opioid settlement. We have opioid settlement, but finding out what that is, I know that, in talking with Kathy McKay, there's been some ongoing discussion in the community about what we're planning to utilize funding for. This board has allocated up to $1 million for the substance use facility, which would remain, would give us about $1,900,000 over the next 18 years to allocate towards some sort of opioid mitigation. And so I guess, as we get to that point, I think that, you know, we would look to, public health has been identified as kind of the coordinator of that plan. Having said that, I think that because of the settlement and the amount of money, that it's larger than that. And so my recommendation would be is that the board consider having two commissioners participate in any type of committee that comes out of the planning from public health. Right now, we do have, we have a substance abuse committee that would seem to fit this discussion, and that would be Commissioner Kaylee and Commissioner Ebinger. But just wanted to bring that forward for the board's consideration as far as appointment to committee.
And we have, we did discuss that earlier this week as well, and felt that it would be a fairly smooth alignment with what their committees are. But Commissioner Campbell?
I would, I would move that we have Commissioner Ebinger and Kaylee be involved with any committee establishment for the purpose of the opioid settlement funding.
We have a motion from Commissioner Campbell to appoint Commissioner Kaylee and Commissioner Ebinger to the opioid committee with per diem. Correct?
Okay.
Second from Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Okay.
I'd like to note I abstained.
Okay. Let's, if we are abstaining, let's do that before voting, just for clarity in the future, but.
I don't know that he needs to abstain from that. I don't know that he needs to abstain from that.
And that, I think we don't have to have that decision today, but I think as we move forward with the resource, excuse me, Substance Use Facility, identifying what that building committee will be once we move forward.
Yeah, and we kind of talked about that. Again, this week, we had a lot of discussions about committees and going forward. I know that there's kind of different channels, and I feel like there's also a pretty substantial component in regards to the mental health component, and it might be appropriate, once we identify a contractor, to have a construction, standing construction committee and a standing committee that would identify potential partnerships with mental health services in that. And so then, you know, I know Commissioner Gross was a huge champion of the correctional facility mental health piece, so it might, there might be a smooth split with that, but that's further to come.
Yeah, I just like, from the construction standpoint, I'd certainly like to be involved with that if that's possible. I've been on all of them, and I've got a background there, so.
Anything else?
That concludes my report.
Okay, all right. Anything else? All right, we are scheduled for a short break, and then we will go into a closed session. So we're short on time, so can we just do a three-minute break? Is that okay with everyone? Okay. We'll be back at 3:44. We are back from the break. We will need a motion and a second to go into a closed session.
Go to close.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell to go into a closed session, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion?
The record should just show it's for union.
Yes, as noted in the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are in closed session. We'll shut down.
Back on, doesn't look like it, but, okay, now we're back on. Okay, is there any further business? Or do we have to make a motion to open the meeting?
We did that.
Nope, that's been done. Just.
Okay. Okay, any other business to take care of? Not, we are adjourned today.